We have a few pleasures.
Thank you.
One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If there are no objections, oh, sorry, is there any public comment? If there are no objections, we're going to take a warrant out of order. And we have two warrants this evening. If there are no objections, I'll go through both of them at the same time and then we can vote on them together if there are no objections. We have warrant SVW 15-12 in the amount of $181,688.04. We have warrant SVW 15-13 in the amount of $53,940.72. Make a motion that we...
So move.
Consider both. Seconded by President Gill. Are there any questions or discussions on the warrants? Thank you. We will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. In addition to voting on the warrants, we are also required to sign the warrants once it is approved. And because we haven't had a meeting in a little while, we had two warrants this evening. We usually only have one. And I will bring these down to Ms. Sullivan. I spoke with Mrs. Sharkey and she is at home recovering and although she wanted to be here, she risked the ire of her husband, Jack, who would not let her come out under these weather conditions.
Jack has no control over the weather whatsoever. Have you known that?
Mary Alice likes to let Jack think he has some control. And so she is staying home this evening and I think Jack is right. It would be much too slippery for her this evening. The next item on the agenda are the minutes from January 12th, which was the last time we met.
Motion to accept the minutes from January 12th.
Motion by President Gill.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any questions or comments on the minutes? No, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. The minutes are approved. Next is the Subcommittee reports. And although Ms. Sharkey did give me two Subcommittee reports, they are presently sitting at my house. Both her curriculum and her budget Subcommittee. And I apologize, Mrs. Sharkey, if you're watching.
I don't know if you usually say that.
I did.
You did?
At the very beginning. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for reminding me of that. Are there any other Subcommittee reports? I don't think that there were.
No.
Next is the Superintendent's report. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, it's really been tough doing a three-day week of schools. I want to just express my, you know, bewilderment of what we've been in in regards to this climate. We've certainly seen some historic snowfall and yet again, it appears that this Sunday, we're going to see some more. The good news this time is that we're not in school. The bad news is, we're not in school. So, we, the principals and I, as well as I, just to bring you up to date, have been working to try to create some type of way to look at doing a plan that might be able to either make up for some of these days that we've been out, snow days, and, you know, come up with some alternative measures. We sent out a survey to the staff today to get their input and I will be probably, once I get that information in on Friday, starting to look at alternatives. What I wanted to express to everybody is that there are alternatives that we can do on our own without any of the Commissioner's approval. That is, as long as we do 180 days, we do $900 hours in the elementary and 990 in the middle school, high school. So, our calendar goes from September, usually, majority of our calendar goes from after Labor Day, the first Tuesday after Labor Day, until the 180th school day, or in this case, the 183rd day of the year comes because of professional development in June. Currently, our original last day of school was June 17th. We put in, we built in five snow days to go to June 24th. We have done seven snow days to date. We, I feel pretty good about the sense that I think we're going to make it the rest of this week, which means that when we come back in, starting the last week of February, we'll have already accrued seven days, which now brings us to June 26th, that Friday. So if we do nothing and the, no more snow days are called, we're fine. We would make it. We could, we could do what we need to do if we, if we were to hold on that. If we had two more snow days, that would bring us to June 30th and now we're really stretching the issue here. So, we're trying to be proactive and we're trying to look at some alternative ways that we can make sure that we fulfill the requirement of 180 days and the hours. The hours are not going to be the issue. The issue is going to be the days. So, the Commissioner allows you to, if you want to change a holiday to a school day, you can do that. If you so choose, you want to change a religious day that you normally might take off in a calendar, you can do that. If you'll notice, last week, in the comments from the Commissioner as well as the Governor, they had stated that there are districts that start before Labor Day and they should be commended. To be quite honest, I took a little offense on that, only because sometimes our hands are tied in what happens and what we do do. But the reason I did is because when you look at other districts that have started before Labor Day, they also are only one day ahead of me. Because they take all the religious holidays, they take all various holidays throughout the year that we choose not to take. So, it's just a matter of the district's priorities and how they feel that it should be. If we were to eliminate some days during a vacation week, you could do that as well and that wouldn't need, that would need no approval. If you chose to go to school on Saturdays, that would need no approval from the Commissioner. The only thing that would need an approval from the Commissioner is that if we requested a waiver that would extend hours in place of days. And so what that means is that, and the only way that the Commissioner really, from what I'm hearing, is really going to take a look at that, is to say, if you offer an hour a day, maybe six hours would equal a day. But, what you also have to take into, that he is stating too, is that he's taking your 185-day calendar into effect. So if your 185th-day calendar, in our case, would have been January 24th, then...
Means June 24th.
I mean, June 24th, thank you. January 24th, maybe that's when the snow started, so, June 24th, then how would you make up those remaining days? Well, in this particular case, that would be two days, you know, for us in that case. So, or, you could put in another alternative plan that says, we would like to make up more days and this is what we would like to do because we also feel from an educational standpoint that if you could increase the day, it's more, it's worthwhile to look at that. And this is just from, from an administrative standpoint. I don't know what, you know, my peers and the teaching ranks and all the other ranks that we've sent out are looking at. But, our main concern, of course, is that MCAS most likely will not be delayed and various things that we're held accountable for become an issue. So, a lot of people out there have been saying, well, what about April vacation? Would you lose a few days on April vacation? Would you do that? And that obviously is an option. But you have to also take the good with the bad. And the other part is, is that the district is also accountable for its attendance and participation rate when it gets held accountable. And if days, other than the current school days that you have in place, could come back and hurt us. Like, a day like today, you know, we got everybody in there as best we could today. Some people chose not to come. They felt that it wasn't, you know, appropriate yet for them to be able to do that. They didn't feel that they could come. So that attendance hurts us. So we have to be conscious of all of those, all of those options. I would like to, if, what I would say to you all is that, after the survey, and I look at it Friday and we have a discussion amongst our team and decide a direction that we think we may want to go in, then I may need to bring you folks back and say, before the March 9th meeting and say, can we talk about this? Because if there's a, if there is a, a request for a waiver, I don't want to wait till March 9th to put that request in. I want to get going because our clock is ticking on our MCAS and on our kids. And you know, when I hear parents say to me, especially of the little ones, geez, my kid's kind of forgotten what, you know, such and such and such and such because he's been out a lot and all of that stuff, you know, it's all about routine. And so we're really working hard to build that routine up. So, I appreciate, I also want to say that I appreciate everybody's input on this because it's, it's, you know, but the joke is, everybody's going to go to school through July. Well, only if we got to June 30th. That was the final point I wanted to make. Because there's a big question, a lot of times people say, well, what about those snow emergency days, state emergencies? You know, the Governor declares a state of emergency. You don't have to make that up. That is a correct statement. If the, if the Commissioner says to you, okay, it's June 30th and you've done 179 days and you're asking for us to waive the 180th day because of a snow emergency and you've already made it to June 30th, then yes, we will waive that for you. But not before that. So people have to understand that just because the Governor said, it's a state of emergency, we can't just say, oh, good, we don't have to make that up. And that's important. The other thing that's important that I've learned, and I'm sure you've all learned too by looking at that memo I sent you, is that the primary days are between September and March 31st. Any weather-issue day that happens after April 1st, that could be a, you know, a big storm or even, you don't, that, that becomes an issue there where they can waive that circumstances. So, the key right now is to get us to that April 1st and hopefully we have a better March and we have a better February on it. So we are working on it right now. We either try to put a plan in to make up for more days, or we take a look at to make up for two days, or however it goes. So, and, and my last point is this. One of the things that we stress a lot as the administration team is that, you know, if they were going to put the MCAS in June, great. But a lot of times, our seniors right now, where, what are they, what's, what's the value there? Because our seniors are missing this time and so, those days in June mean nothing to them. And a lot of those days in June, after, you know, June 15th and stuff, it's, we look at it from the perspective that, jeez, if we could get more time with them now, it would be better off. So, those are the ways we're, we're looking at it.
Can we put together a plan for the Commission of Education that calls for a longer school day? Submit that and use it if we need to and not use it if we don't need to.
Yes, you could. You could. So what would happen is you would put a plan together that if you wanted a longer school day in lieu of days, then the Commissioner would either say, okay, how, wants to know, how is this going to spell it out? How would you look at it? How would it work? We know already that we would, if we wanted to go a longer day, then that would have to be at least one hour a day. They're not going to approve anything under an hour a day. That's, that's a given. They've already basically said that. The question for us is, would it be worth it for us to try to get more days if we're going to go an hour? Is it worth it to go an hour a day for two weeks to make up two days? Or is it worth it to go an hour a day for a month or two that's going to really value what we need to get done to make up more days? But more importantly, it's the time on learning that we're trying to get for our kids. So, that's the difference. And, and whether or not the Commissioner would approve that, or the Commissioner might just say, no, I'm only going to approve those days after the 185. And so that's, that's the issue.
Please, Ms. Sullivan.
And just so I understand, so if we were to add a time to the school day, it would have to be a minimum of an hour? And it wouldn't be from the date we decide, you know, it gets approved till, till June?
No, it would only be for that, we...
It would be an hour for the whole school year.
Right. Because we would look at it, we would look at, say, six hours is equivalent to a day. So, if they said you needed to make up two days, that you wanted to make up two days or three days or four days? Because here again, we, we, who knows? We could be three, we could have three more days in the next month. I'm hoping no. But, if that was five days, 30 hours, that could consist of 30 days.
Six weeks.
Right. But, we don't want to be doing this in April, we want to be doing this in March in April, if we can. So that, because, March 22nd, March 24th, MCAS arrive. And then May 15th, the MCAS are there again. And so, but more importantly, for our seniors, and I know our seniors are saying, hey, great, you know, this is good. But, the other thing that we forget though, is the AP exams. The Advanced Placement exams are crucial and those happen in May 4th. So, here again, your whole AP window, June is nothing for them. It's now. So, so we have some ideas, but I also need, in a, in a waiver with the, with the Commissioner, I need union approval. I need school committee approval. And I need to show them what the contracts look like, how, how it's going to work. And they want all of that spelt out for you. And that's what it does. So, we're considering it. We're taking a look at it. We're seeing if it's worth it. And we'll see what, what comes of Friday.
What's the consequence of not getting that 180? Do we lose Chapter 70 money? What, what happens?
I would imagine we'd be held in compliant, in noncompliant and so we could lose some funding. That would be the, the, because schools that don't, most schools that are private schools, they don't get funding and they can go whenever they want. You know, they can set their schedule up. You know, but, I, that's, yeah, that's primarily. And that's why we, quite frankly, because they fund us, that's why we take the MCAS too. You know, they want to hold us accountable on that. They want to see how we're doing.
I feel like there's some sense of urgency in the community about making this decision and as well as giving the students the time that they've missed to prepare for the exams. What, what sort of your timeline in figuring this out?
So I've been working with the other districts, the other partnerships in our five districts because we're trying to kind of look at this together because we, we feel like we have a little more growing power. However, what I did do is I put a survey out yesterday, asked that survey results be in on Friday. We will, from that, I will put together some type of, I'll, I'll touch base to see where we're at. Because the biggest concern is, is that if you have a schools on Saturday and you don't have any buy-in, it's not going to work. If you have school on April vacation, which, yes, you could do three days on April vacation and that resolves a lot of problems, but if there's not a lot of buy-in to it, it's going to cause a lot more anguish than it is, then that could be an issue. So, I just needed to get some feedback because that data is also very important for the Commissioner in the report that you do. Our goal, if we were to do something, we would love to see something in place by March 9th, you know. But, here again, we never experienced this. It's all new to most of us and so we're just trying to go with that, go at it one day at a time.
We only have, the holidays between now and the end of the year are President's Day, which is Monday.
Right.
Patriot's Day, which is incorporated into our April vacation, and Memorial Day at the end of May. Really, the only holiday that we could make a school day would be Memorial Day.
Right.
Otherwise, it's Saturdays.
Right. And if you noticed yesterday in Boston, Boston said, oh, we're going to go to school on Bunker Hill Day and Evacuation Day.
We've already eliminated that.
We've already eliminated that. So that's, that's my point when it goes to, well, that's great for those communities that do it before, but hello, we, we're doing that too. You've just got to look at the whole schedule. And I don't mean to be, you know...
I mean, other districts have Good Friday off as well and we don't take that day.
Right, and we don't have Good Friday off. So I know that, I know that the districts, my five, my partnerships of the five districts, the other four, all have Good Friday off, so they'll probably pick up that day. But, we've already had that, so...
But we have two days left at the end of the calendar?
We do. So right now, we're at the 27th. And if, and if a little voice told me we were going to not have any more snow days, that was going to be it, then, you know, we would take a look at options. But, the other voice that says to me, and many of their voices that you see right over there, are, because they're the ones also that are held accountable in their schools. And they're sitting there saying, I want the kids in here. I want the kids in here. I want the students in here. We need to get them in here because we, we're making some great gains here and yet we don't want to lose that. So, so we're, we're, we'll get something out.
Obviously, we're not going to do anything with February vacation.
No.
That starts Monday.
Right.
That will be February vacation. April vacation is something that you mentioned. I can only speak for myself. I know three children that will not be in winter during April vacation. My three children.
You could add two to that because I've already spent about $3,000 in, in airline tickets, but...
So I see support from the school committee on going during April vacation going pretty So it's very possible that we will come on, we will continue with April vacation as a vacation. And I have spoken to other people who also, it's not just me and Mr. Perrin who will be away. Other parents have spoken to me as well.
We also, we also have 10 students that are going to Spain, April vacation from high school.
Greece?
Oh, Greece it is, right. You know, there's, there's multiple things that are, that are happening that it's, it's difficult at the last second. I mean, if it is something we have to do because we have no choice down the road, then we do and we figure out a way to deal with those who can't be here. But I would imagine, that's what I'm talking about when I say, you folks have made arrangements. I'm sure I have faculty that have made arrangements. And it's funny, I've had a lot of faculty who've come up to me this week and said, geez, I wish we could come in next week. You know, well, yeah, but, that's probably because it's next week. You can say that, but right now, we can't, you know? So...
So the likelihood is, there would be an ability to make up work and that work with students? It wouldn't be like the academic failures that would...
No, see, the, the other option is, is if you, and I'm, and I'm just throwing things out, if you went to school on April vacation and you did say, some, some people have given us some suggestions of maybe you do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday because you have two long weekends, you know, and you had three days there. Well, at the high school level where that academic failure comes into it, over the course of three days, you probably only have your courses twice. So, therefore, if you weren't absent anymore during that semester, then you probably wouldn't be in jeopardy of that. And then if that was the case because of that, then I would imagine there'd be a pretty good appeal process. But, you got to be careful because you don't want to turn around and just say, oh, yeah, we're going to waive it that weekend because then, there's all the kids, you know, they figure they don't have to come. So, we're, we're kind of at a, a catch-22 right now. But I, I would like to hold, I'd like to see what I got and I'd like to be able to come back with you with some data that shows. I will be happy to email you the data that shows you what, the direction that I'm looking And I think, you know, we'll, we'll go from there. And it may not be anything. It may be that we, we stay with what we have. But, I just wanted to bring the public aware because I know the public has asked me numerous times and I just wanted them also to be thinking about what we're, we're thinking. Because whether people, you know, when people say, oh, you've had no school, you've been no school, how's it playing? Well, some of us are here all year and some of us are here during those no-school days. And this is what we've ended up working on now more than ever, so...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have. Under appointments, I do have one resignation letter. Last year, if you know, recall, Ms. Kalishman had gone on a year's leave of absence.
Yes.
And Ms. Kalishman has decided that she's not going to be returning. She said she had a wonderful time spent with the children. She's enjoyed that and she's with mixed emotions that she's resigning from winter. Her circumstances have changed. So we wish Ms. Kalishman the best of luck. I know that she has been a very, very happy mom and so she will not be returning. And we had to post two positions, JV hockey coach and a JV basketball coach. And somebody might ask, why are we posting a JV hockey coach at this late in the game? And part of the reason was, was that we have people that are participating in it, but that, we found that that position was never posted, so we needed to post it correctly. And that's all I have under personnel. Oh, JV baseball, yes. That one has not started and that one may take a while before they start. So...
We could, we could take a lottery, see when the snow at the public landing will disappear. It might be, school may end in June before that snow disappears. Any questions or comments for the Superintendent?
Check that.
Next is the payroll warrant. And again, if there are no objections, we have two payroll warrants. I'll go over both of them and if there are no objections, we'll consider them together. We have a payroll dated December 3rd, 2014, in the amount of $615,247.87. We have a payroll dated December 17th, 2014, in the amount of $619,246.54. Make a motion that we approve both payrolls.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any questions, comments on the payroll? We will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I can't vote. I'm sorry, I do that every time. If I could do that again, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? I abstain. Thank you. I have a sister who's an employee of the school department, so I'm not allowed to vote on the payroll. Next are the budget transfers. You all got in your packet one page, which contains budget transfers, and that is in the amount transferring $116,593.22.
Motion, motion that all the budget transfers listed be...
Motion by President Gill.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any questions or comments on the budget transfer? We will vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Next are the request for use of buildings. And we have three, all from Parks and Recs, guitar lessons, basketball camp, and the character breakfast and egg hunt. Make a motion that we approve all three at once. Any question, any objections to that? Is there a second? President Gill seconds. Questions or comments on the three requests for buildings? We'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Next is the vote on the hardware surplus. We have a letter from Mr. Rocco. We have three items in his letter. Make a motion that we declare those items surplus.
Second.
Seconded by President Gill. Any questions or comments? We will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Next is...
I can email it to you.
I'm sorry for my delay. With the no objections, I'm going to ask for a three-minute recess. No objections? We're in recess. We did, I did skip over the budget presentation under financial matters. That I anticipate will be the longest item this evening and I enjoy being in the company of our principals so much that I want to delay that as long as possible. We do have one other item before we get to that and this may, this may or may not take as long. And that's the calendar for the 2015-2016 academic year, which you all have in your packet. And which, which starts the students on September 1st. For September 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, they would be off on Friday, the 4th of September. Monday, the 7th is Labor Day. That would be a holiday and then we would resume school.
Or we could start in July and get ahead of this thing.
Well, you'd have to change the contract.
The teacher contract does not allow us to go to school in July or August.
But I'm there with you.
We, we have Columbus Day on the 12th of October. We have... We have, you'll see that the 3rd of November is marked as a no-school day, that is an election day.
So it's a teacher professional day?
In, in our town. It's a town election, I believe, isn't it?
Yes.
Town election. And because of the arrangements of the schools, we anticipate that the town clerk will be asking for the use of the coming school cafeteria for voting on November 3rd. So that, the superintendent scheduled it as a professional development day and a no-school day. November 11th is Veterans Day. November 26 and 27 would be Thanksgiving. Then we get into the holidays in December, the 24th of December, which is a Thursday, and that goes right through the 1st, we return to school on Monday, the 4th of January. The 18th of January is Martin Luther King Day. Now we get to February, when we have traditionally had a week of vacation. You will see that there are two days in February when there is no school on this calendar. The 15th, which is President's Day, and then the 16th, and that would be our February vacation. We would be back in school on Wednesday, the 17th, 18th, and 19th. It would be an abbreviated February vacation. We then go to April, when we have our traditional April vacation. May is Memorial Day on the 30th. June 10th is now scheduled as a professional development day. The last day for students would be June 9th under this calendar. That builds in a few snow days.
Can I just, I'm gonna make one clarification, because.
Please.
On the calendar, you'll see that there's a teacher professional day currently under this calendar. For the first day would be August 31st. Now that currently has to be approved by the Teachers Association. In the contract, it states that anytime Labor Day, that, that September dates come before Labor Day, we may start school. If Labor Day, we can't start school in August without the permission of the teachers, but in September we can. So what I have done on this calendar is I've also given them, I've, I've asked the president to talk with her association to see if either the following could have the option. The teachers come in on that Monday, the 31st, we have school Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday for students, and we give the community at large a long weekend. The Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Labor Day weekend, that long Labor Day weekend. If not, if the teachers, otherwise, we would, the teachers would come in on September 1st, and we would start the kids on September 2nd, and I would do 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. I would not be out on that Friday, I would keep that Friday in. So either way, I want to get four days in before Labor Day. And I can do it technically, because we have the right to do that in September. I've just asked if they would prefer a longer weekend. So I just, and the reason I say that is because that decision hasn't come back from.
Right.
Yet. So if there were to be any approval tonight, I just wanted you to know that pending, that could change that first week.
We could, as, as you said, the, the contract with the teachers does not allow us to bring them in during the month of August.
Right.
And on this calendar, the 31st is marked as a professional development day. And as you also said, and I'm sorry to keep repeating what you've already said, we need to get permission from the teachers before we can do that.
And, and I've asked, I'm seeking that now.
So we could approve this calendar, letting everyone know now that President Gill has stepped out of the room. He did inform me earlier that he may have to step out for five to 10 minutes, but he will be back. And in the meantime, we will not be able to vote, because presently, we do not have a quorum. We only have three members. Because we are a seven-member board, we need to have at least four members. We can do everything else, we cannot vote on anything without a quorum. We can approve this as it is, and if the teachers decline to work on the 31st, the school, the school committee does have to vote on the calendar, so the school committee would need to, if we approve this, we would need to vote to make the 4th of September a school day. But what we would be saying, if, if we were to approve this, we would be letting the town of Winthrop, the students, the parents, know that February vacation next year, 2016, would be shortened. It would not be a full week. Many people buy tickets to go away well in advance, so I wanted to let them know as soon as possible, if we were to shorten that. Now, you may not have had a chance, I did forward to you earlier today, the, an editorial from the Boston Globe today, which had some discussion on canceling February vacations altogether. They had, they made some interesting points. This doesn't cancel it altogether, but it does make it only two days, Monday and Tuesday. And.
Are we having a discussion?
We can have, we can certainly have a discussion. Yes, would you like to say something, Ms. Sullivan?
I like that September 1st is, is earlier than Labor Day, and I like the precedent of starting before Labor Day. And I know there's other school districts that do have professional development the last week of August, and up to three days, and start school before Labor Day. So I think that helps us with more school days before MCAS in, in the spring. I just questioned the professional development on the last day of school, and the.
I'm gonna give you the reason why on there. And obviously, this past year, I wish I had that professional development on the last day of school, because there's also, was the transition that we ran into. Next year, I'm anticipating that there's going to be a lot of issues that are going to be going on. And I, I, I understand professional development as opposed to maybe moving and stuff, but it's one of those where I need those, I'm, I'm looking at it from the perspective of the district in a savings sense, saying if I have the teachers there, and it won't affect during the school year to be packing or things like that, to be ready to move into a new school, I have them on that particular day. So that was the only reason why I, I put it at that point.
Our new middle high school is scheduled to open in September of 2016. So folks who are going to be moving out of our existing buildings, like the 3rd grade back to.
So I was looking at, I was anticipating that that.
The 3rd grade back. Mrs. Pearson says, no, we can't have the 3rd grade back. Mr. Harrow, you're gonna have to talk to Mrs. Pearson about that.
The other thing is, though, is if we got through, if we got through the school year, I mean, through the winter time, and we felt we're in good shape, we could change, because there's another possibility that next year, we still have a voting issue that may have, because we have presidential primary. The presidential primary is scheduled to be on March 1st. And I haven't agreed yet to give that day up of school, because that's, that's a crucial time of year for us. But if we felt like we were in a good point, then we could maybe always switch to that day too, so. It kind of gives me a little window of opportunity that I wish I had had this past year.
I'll be honest, the, the February shortened vacation, from my point of view, isn't about snow days, it's about MCAS. It's about getting the, the students into the building before March, so that we're better prepared for MCAS.
And one more thing, sorry. I don't see half-days reflected on this, is that something you'll add later?
No, we don't reflect those, it's still, it would still, if we follow the same calendar as we have, I mean, this, you know, the contract, the contract doesn't change. There'd be 10 half-days at the elementary and six at the high school level. I will keep, continue to have those on Fridays. I would just plug them in once I knew what the calendar was.
And those half-days are used for parent conferences and professional development?
Six of them are used for parent conferences at the elementary level, and the other four are used, at the elementary level are used for professional development. At the high school level, I believe all six are professional development, do you use any for conference? No.
No.
All six are professional development.
Mr. Perrin.
I'm not a big fan of taking away February vacation. I understand the Globe did their, their article or their editorial, but I still think it's important to give these kids the time. I know we have February and April vacation, I get it, I get it, but I think we can move it up in June. I just think it's, it's been a tradition, it's been here forever, not that that makes it perfect, but I just like the idea of it, I like the family time, I take the week off myself every year, that's the time I spend with my children, so. I'd like to see it stay, I mean, I don't know how much quality time we're gonna spend on a Monday, Thursday, and a Friday.
I'm more than willing to come to school on the 16th, if you'd like.
What's that?
The 16th, we could eliminate that as a day off and make that a school day. We'll have a four-day week.
No, I, I, but my point is diametrically opposed to yours, which is, I don't think it should be eliminated. You know, I mean, we have other days in the calendar that we can work with, I just don't think it's a good idea to do. And we have plenty of time to talk about, I think it's, it's such an important, and I'm gonna throw my pen at you.
There's no need to throw.
But I think, I think we should have the whole committee here for something like this, because I think it's a, it's a pretty drastic change in the schedule all the way across the board. So I just think it's important that more than four people discuss it, and we get some feedback. This is the first, I, I couldn't open mine, but I'd like to have everyone weigh in on this.
Sometimes I, I agree with you, Mr. Perrin. It has been very difficult to get the full committee together for quite some time now.
No, I got you, that's, that's the snow days, I've got it.
Well, it's.
I've been here. But I think it's important that we give everyone the opportunity, and we have Mary Alice out with recuperating and, you know, just a hold, I believe it's working this evening, but I think it's important to have the whole school committee present to discuss this. It's a pretty drastic change.
I mean, my feeling is, it is, I, I agree with Brian, it is a tradition, people look forward to February vacation, people look forward to April vacation, you know, they do make plans. Other towns in the, that are surrounding us, you know, I don't know if the, the other five districts are, other, you know, districts in the five district program are looking at this kind of calendar. I think it would go a long way if more schools in the region adopted this kind of school calendar. I'm, you know, I'm more of a proponent of, you know, starting before Labor Day, longer school days, you know, if, if possible, and, you know, continuing with the typical vacations, so that's how I would vote if we were to vote tonight.
Let's vote tonight.
Literally, I'm not going to ask for a vote tonight.
But that said, I think, you know, Mrs. Scarmore, you.
Didn't see that coming.
What you've, you know, what you vocalized about needing more time before MCAS is, you know, I'm also in support of, so. I would like to see those days in August before Labor Day, and longer, you know, an extra 20 minutes, half an hour during school time.
To your point of, we should all do it at the same time, that's never gonna happen. Somebody has to start, perhaps others will follow, perhaps they won't. It doesn't matter to me when Malden goes to school, when Revere goes to school, it doesn't matter to me. It's the children of Winthrop that I have to worry about, that I'm concerned about, and getting them in school as many days as I can before MCAS is important to me. Now, to say that it's tradition, yes, it is, but as Mr. Perrin said, that doesn't mean we have to do it. We have two weeks almost, well, we have a week and a half off in December and January, then we have a holiday, another holiday in January, and then we need another week off in February? I'm not sure that we do. In fact, I would say I'm sure that we don't.
Let's call the vote.
We go, we go through September, October into November without a week's vacation, and we can't make it two months, once we get to the winter, without a vacation.
I say that, I say that children, Gary, and I think it's, the three days isn't gonna make a, a market, you know, a, a big difference in the MCAS scores. I'd like to see them spend more time, I, I see other dates we can work with, but I just think it's a drastic, drastic change. And what do you say to the parent that has a child that goes to a different school district? That is on, on February vacation, or you, you go to school, you know, will work around you. It's, it's just, it's, some of it's a little bit unworkable.
There have been employees of the school department who have said to me, I live X number of miles away, and I have to drive through that to get to school today? I can't be, I can't worry about where you live and that you have to travel to get here. Again, it's the students of Winthrop that, that have to be our concern.
The citizens of Winthrop.
And if.
Exactly.
If, well, more specifically, the children. That's, that's who we're trying to educate.
Right.
And I would feel certainly badly for a parent who teaches in another district and whose child goes to the Winthrop schools. But again, I can't, I can't make that my overriding priority. I don't know how many of those people there are, I suspect there are a few. But at the same time, if you, if you have vacation and you have two parents who work, who aren't teachers, they have to arrange for, for daycare. And I would guess there are more of those than there are of teachers.
I'm talking about siblings that are outside the district, vocational school, religious education schools. They, they, they may not follow that schedule. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things to think about here, a lot of people have to weigh in. It's a, it's a drastic change, and I just, I, it's, it's good to start discussing it, but I don't think this is the year to do it.
Neither was last year when we discussed it, that wasn't the year to do it.
And it wasn't done.
Shall the year ever come?
Let's call the vote.
We can't vote, there are only three members.
I commend you for trying to be a trailblazer, Mr. Scarmore, in the, in the region.
Well, then let's do it, Ms. Sullivan, as soon as Mr. Gill comes back.
You're almost gonna send me.
Well, we can't vote on it anyway. Not that I would ask for it anyway.
May, may I have a comment on this? I would prefer that you did not vote tonight, and the reason why is I would prefer to clean up the, that one week, that first week in the September area anyway, to make sure that we're all, you know, set with that, because I would hate to have the association maybe feel that I didn't wait for their input, so.
Now, what do you want to talk about?
Should we motion and table this, or we don't need to?
Well, we can't now, there's no motion, there's no vote. We can't vote.
Can we proceed with the budget presentation?
No, I think that, Mr. Perrin, I think that you and I can agree on that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, and I, and I feel like we'd better talk quick, because we're losing members as we go along, but I understand, it's been a difficult time period of getting our meetings with all this snow as well. Over the snow days, though, we, Ms. Echols, the administration team, as you, we will hear tonight from, have put together what I believe is a good comprehensive school budget moving forward to the 2016 fiscal year. Couple of things that I'd like to just highlight for you, as you'll see on my, one of the things that I did this year is I wanted to put together the total packet now. Talk about it in February, get it on TV so that we're talking about it in February. And then on March 9th, we will have a public hearing of this meeting, so that the community can come in and view their opinions towards the budget as well. And then on, hopefully, March 23rd, the school committee has had an opportunity to decide yes or no, or what, or make recommendations and changes of what they would like to recommend. And that's the key part here, is the budget that you're recommending to the town manager for approval with the town council. So whatever the school committee does approve out of this, if they approve the number that I have proposed with the leadership team, then, then that would go forward, and then the town manager, of course, that budget could change. But the school committee has the right to say they want more or less, you know, however you foresee as we go through it. But I wanted to give it the due time that it needed. There'll be an ad tomorrow in the newspaper talking about the public, what do they call, public.
Puzzle hearing.
Puzzle hearing, right. Giving them the, the total amount, because it has to be in there 21 days prior to that meeting, which we will be 26 days, so we're in good shape on that. So over the past year, you know, the Winter Public Schools, we've, we've done a one-to-one iPad initiative for high school students, grades 8 through 12. We've gotten six additional sets Chromebooks for the Arthur T. Cummings in various fashions, whether it came from town council, gifts, committees, all of that. Document cameras for the William Gorman classrooms, full-time music in all schools. World Language Drama STEM at the grades 4 through 12. Full-time instrumental program now with over 200 students participating. Smart technology project is put in all the classrooms at the Arthur T. Cummings. Full-time curriculum director, full-time athletic trainer this year, and common planning blocks we were to establish. So these are some highlights, these are things that we've, we've improved upon, but now we're looking at moving forward, and we want to continue with these goals about what it is that we're, we're striving for. So tonight, you're gonna hear from each principal. The principal met with their site councils. The principals created a needs assessment. The principals submitted to me reasons why these positions are needed in their schools, and what those areas. The principal submitted to me reasons why these positions are needed in their schools and what those areas and the cost equipment implications are. After they did that, I looked at it and said, "Okay, these, you know, we'll put this in, we'll put stuff in it." And I came up with the total of, of the request of seventeen million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars proposal that I am putting forward to the school committee. Now, that doesn't represent all of the requests that some of these individual schools put forward, but it represents what I felt was a, a number that I could live with, that I thought we should be able to move forward at this time. Because I thought that it was important that, you know, we look at what are the main goals that we're doing. So tonight, I've asked the principals to do a short, uh, presentation of how they got to where they were at. My, what I would ask is that the committee refrain from any questions, let us do the whole presentation if that's possible, Mr. Chairman, and then afterwards, ask us all the questions you'd like. It just, we, we talked about tonight, rhythm, routine, moving along, and I think that that may work best. And then tomorrow night, the, uh, I, Ms. Echols, have been invited to the finance committee to kind of talk about our preliminary budget. But I felt it was important first that it's your budget. It's important that it goes to you folks first. And remember, this is the budget that you need to decide on what should move or be recommended to move on to the town manager. So if you take a look at, these are net school spending foundation budgets. Uh, these were the past three years. Uh, the top line is what was required. The actual is what, um, was actually spent according to the Department of Ed and the town. Right now, the twenty-one million, sixty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-eight under fiscal fifteen is only asterisk because that's what they're projecting that we're spending, but that number doesn't finalize until the end of the year report. Um, and then, of course, we show you the amounts that, over the required spending. And again, I have to repeat what that means. The chapter seventy funding and the state requires that the school district, this is the amount that they are, the town of Winthrop is required to pay towards Winter Public Schools. As long as they don't go under that, that's fine. They can put as much money as they want over it, but they cannot go under it. And you'll see in the next slide there, you'll see the, um, we, in this packet that we've included, it's the requested seventeen, nine-nine-seven, three-seventy-eight. There's also a two-hundred-and-fifty-nine, five-twenty-seven proposed athletic revolving budget. What I mean by that, that's the money in the athletic account that we have to raise on a yearly basis that's not accounted for within the budget. That's important to know, because there are monies that we already account for in the budget for the athletic department, which is about another two-hundred thousand. But the two-hundred-and-fifty-nine is monies that we have to come up with, whether it be through user fees, gate receipts, and other, um, et cetera, items that would bring in some of that money. And I'll talk a little about that later on the athletics. And then, of course, we list how our grants are broken down. Then the next page is by series. Each of these series, either are by the school series, the different three sites of schools, the administrative series, special education series, as well as, what's the last one, the nine thousand?
Leases.
Right, special ed?
No, five thousand is the leases, nine thousand is-
Oh, leases, right. And then nine thousand's district-wide. So you have leases, you have district-wide, and then you have the schools themselves.
Mr. Superintendent, if I may interrupt for one second, I just want to let everybody know that we do, again, have a quorum, so if we do need to vote on anything, we can. Thank you, sir.
So the total fiscal year requested funds, as I stated, um, in the past, I mean, this year is seventeen million, nine-nine-seven, three-hundred and seventy-eight. With that said, I'd like to turn us over to the William P. Gorman Fort Banks principal, Ms. Pearson, who would like to kind of just bring you up to speed on what, how they came to there and what their budget requests are.
Okay, thank you. Nice to see everybody again. Um, so the way we came to our budget truly is through a survey of staff, which was done at our last staff meeting, and through the regular involvement and communication with the school site council. So everything that's submitted is a reflection of that. In addition to Mrs. Grimes and I being the instructional leaders in our building, having what we feel is a pretty good understanding of what the needs are. The first two items that you'll see up there are additional staff allocations based on an unbelievable soar in the number of preschool students that we are seeing with very significant disabilities. And so there is a need for a new substantially separate classroom teacher, and that person, by law, has to come with a paraprofessional as well. So that would be the first thing. Um, I just want to say one other thing. I'm not gonna go through every single thing, 'cause I think that some things are, are pretty obvious. I will say this caveat before going through the rest of this budget. Remember that the budget that I proposed last year was, for lack of a better term, it was a forecast for the unknown, right? I had never had third grade students. I didn't know what their surprising needs were going to be. I didn't know what the staff preferences were going to be. So there are going to be some things that you're gonna see in this budget that are strictly a reflection of reality having taught me a pretty powerful lesson. And, um, one example of that would be, for instance, in the art supplies. Yep, they definitely use as many consumables as the rest of us. And so, um, those are the kinds of things. So if I skip over those numbers that appear to be, um, of less of a consequence, that would likely be the reason why. And one example would be the art supplies, just, you know, by way of illustration. You'll remember that Go Math was, um, is the math curriculum that we use. The district had been part of a five-year bundle, and the decision had been made by the principals and I think championed by the school committee, that we were going to go ahead and put in for annual allocations for Go Math until such a time that the district was in a position to take a better look at the efficacy of the math curriculum that we're using. So that's a one-year allocation that's in there. The supplemental instructional, um, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time seeing it down. The supplemental instructional math tutor is a, there's two people that currently do that for us. They work exclusively in grades one through three. But what I would like to do is I would like to increase that allocation. And so the increase that you see there would give us about ten hours of small group instruction a week for, um, grades one through three. And we are targeting both the student who appears to, um, need some supplemental instruction and some students that would benefit from supplemental instruction because they're already working on accelerated track. The additional, um, music supplies and instruments, again, is a function of our music program expanding with the addition of third grade students. The ELA textbook line item for Storytown is pretty significant, but what we do know is that we need to have leveled readers in every grade two and three classroom. We currently have a couple of sets, and those are being used throughout the entire grade level. By being able to have that funded, it would enhance our ability to differentiate instruction and better supplement the work of the reading department in the classroom themselves. The additional instructional supplies really speak to aligning curriculum and materials. Um, in all honesty, I'm a little bit hyper-focused on the grade two to three connections. And so there have been some materials that grade two teachers have been made aware of that are being used successfully in grade three. They're just recently becoming curious about exploring, well, I shouldn't say recently, but since third grade has been able to, for lack of a better term, school less than their approaches, um, we would like to be able to incorporate those as well. And so that's the additional allocation that you're seeing for the instructional supplies. Um, the next one that's pretty significant is the licenses and subscriptions. I would tell you that the reason you're seeing that as high as it is, is because last year the district did pick up the cost of Lexia for us. Um, that is not, uh, what's going to happen next year. We've been asked to include that in our budget. In addition to the fact that there are so many subscriptions that we have been able to enjoy, both students and parents, through the courtesy of PTO funds. And again, the PTO is just extraordinary in our school. But I think to become complacent and not put that in the budget would be irresponsible. So it well could be that the PTO is going to be able to pick up a considerable cost for that, but I don't want to be quite that cavalier just yet. The additional general supplies, again, have an awful lot to do with the second and third grade teachers wanting some of those general supplies, as we'll call them. And we have now had a better realization of how much more paper we're going through and how much more toner we're going through. The additional number of dry erase markers, and I mean, I could go right into the Staples catalog and explain all of them to you, but I think common sense is gonna prevail, and you're gonna figure out what we're talking about there. The reading assessment materials, again, are a more accurate representation of the assessments that we're using in third grade. Playground maintenance is a line item that has recently been added and sorely needed. Typically, you'll wind up finding that that has to do with the playground inspections for our purposes and replenishing the mulch, um, ideally on a twice-a-year basis. And the academic support tutor, um, is modest, and frankly, is an insufficient request. The idea behind the academic support tutor is to be able to get, imagine this, one hour every day of after-school supplemental time, courtesy of a teacher, for grades one through three. So when I tell you that is modest and insufficient, in an ideal world, we would have one teacher that we would be able to offer a supplemental, um, fee to, or stipend, however it would be called, that would be able to stay at every grade level. And they would be there for the purpose of providing whatever ancillary and supplemental support students needed. But I decided to, uh, to go super conservative and only ask for one. But having said that, I really want three. And I realize that everybody wants what they want, but one of the reasons that I run the Camp Ford program, and one of the reasons that I run the Fun at the Ford program, is because I want to be able to, um, I want to be able to sometimes purchase these things that are over and above. To your way of thinking, they might be luxuries, and to my way of thinking, they're necessities. And so part of the reason that I run those programs is to generate money for our school to be able to have what I consider to be necessities and you might consider to be luxuries. There's a pie chart that's included in your, um, attachment tonight that also speaks to what our percentages are looking like. Frankly, if you were to take a look at the staffing allocation and to take a look at, I mean, the textbook allocation together, that's forty-six percent. That's not bad. I think that's what you would want your typical school budget to look like. You want your school budget to look like it's being allocated for those kinds of services that are going to translate into meaningful advances for students. And hopefully, that's the kind of budget you're receiving. You'd notice also that this is a color-coded, um, pie chart, and so it should be aligning to the costs associated with those percentage allocations. Just so that the public knows, and I would be more than happy to make it available, the school committee has also been provided with a more detailed breakdown as to what each of the allocations within those line items are. So where textbooks is coming in at thirty-six thousand, and you've only seen a detailed accounting of Go Math and Storytown, the school committee would be able to tell you that there are actually also allocations for textbook replacements in there, in addition to new textbooks for science and things like that. And I think that is a summary that is brief and highlights the budget. And I hope you should go.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson.
Now, I don't, Mr. Perrin?
Hi. Uh, thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it. Uh, we've been trying to schedule some time to come and speak with you, so finally get a little bit of a platform, so, thank you. So right here is the budget additions that Mr. Macero put through, um, after we had spoke and discussed, um, you know, what was realistic versus, you know, what are, you know, what are real needs and, you know, what are, uh, our dreams would be in the school, um, if we, if we had, uh, as much money as we could spend and, you know, what we really need to put forward to make sure that we're advancing our students. So if you could click through a couple more slides, Joe, I'm just gonna go through some of my, uh, you can keep going. So these, these slides show you a little bit about how I came up with these decisions, and it starts with, uh, how many students are we gonna have in school? And so we met with our stu, our site council. We discussed with them, you know, with this many students in the school, we looked at our MCAS data, we looked at our specific needs, we looked at, you know, our staffing, are we gonna have enough staff to service these students in all these different grade levels and really move them forward? And this is what we came up with. So we have about, um, one-hundred-and-sixty-five in grade four, one-hundred-and-forty-five in grade five, one-hundred-and-fifty in grade six, and about one-hundred-and-seventy students in grade seven. So these are just kind of some ancillary, some ancillary information here, just about, you know, how we merged and where we're at right now. Last year, our fiscal focus was really on the literacy assessment and funding for, uh, a reading specialist for our grade six and seven students, and also a STEM teacher. Both of those additions, the school committee put forward, and we have a lot of data that has shown that those two moves by the school committee have been extremely beneficial to our students. So I look forward to some time, we're gonna, I was gonna come a couple weeks ago and, and show you some of that data, but I do look forward to sharing that data with you and really showing you where your money went. So, you know, I'm looking at students and really correlating it to the student. We're looking at students that have grown, you know, two grade levels this year because, in their reading, because of the money the school committee has allocated to our students. So I really just wanna applaud you for that. Joe, you could pick one more. We made some transfers this year for hands-on science units. Uh, we're using something this year called Ten Marks in a lot of our classes. This actually comes as a free program, and what you can do is you can sign on your students, if you had, let's say, a grade six classroom, you could create a class online for grade six. Your students could go on there. They can, uh, take assessments on there, they can have assignments on there, and they can complete online activities. If they struggle with a problem at home, they can watch little videos on there. It's very similar to a Khan Academy-type program. Uh, so we kind of balance Khan Academy and Ten Marks, and our teachers that were doing that last year had some tremendous growth. So it's something we've been piloting this year. Uh, we've had, uh, technology funded this year thanks to the, the town council, thanks to, um, the school building assistance committee, and to some generous donations that we've had. We put forward almost two hundred Chromebooks this year. Keep out of Joe. So our academic budget focused for two thousand and fifteen and sixteen, math resources for all grades four through seven. So that's what Ms. Pearson was talking about, the Go Math program. So we've seen some great gains in that, students that are in fourth grade right now that have had that program all the way since kindergarten at Mrs. Pearson's school, that the teachers are reporting that, wow, you know, we're really seeing the gains this year. We're really seeing students that are coming in and saying, they really have a solid vocabulary knowledge and that vertical integration that we're really seeing come up through the grades. We need to really keep that going. So for the next year, we said, you know, until we merge again, we really should stay consistent with our curriculum. And to do that, we're gonna have to purchase Go Math for one more year, and that's about a twenty-thousand-dollar item for us. Uh, Joe, go back one. So the Ten Marks assessment tool is about a ten-thousand-dollar item. That is a sticker price. I know that we can get that number down when we negotiate with them, probably down to seven or eight thousand dollars, but that's the sticker price for the premium version. The premium version basically allows you to, if you have a group of students, like right now, we had thirty-five students that came today for after-school intervention for math. Those students are taking a pre-assessment with Ten Marks. Because we have the premium version, if we have a student that's at a second-grade math level in that class, and we have a student that's at a fifth-grade level in that class, those students are assigned different topics based on exactly where they're at mathematically. So they can work their way through the grade-level curriculum after they've rebuilt their foundation in certain areas. So I think it's, I think it's worth every penny. Hands-on science units, we're spending about thirty-four hundred dollars on that next year, hopefully. We transferred some money this year from our general supply line to purchase some hands-on units. Our goal is to purchase in sixth and seventh grade, to purchase, you know, two units per year and incrementally increase the amount of hands-on units that our teachers have in their classrooms so that they're, they're doing a lot more experiential-type work with the students. Science from scientists, we have that in our fifth-grade classroom. Scientists come to our building once every two weeks, and they put on a lesson. This is something that's been grant-funded for the next two years. If we want to have it funded for next year, we at least need to put it in our budget. And if we put it in our budget, then, uh, we'll be a lot more likely to have it funded externally by them. So if we put it forward for seventy-five hundred dollars and we only get, you know, two thousand dollars through, we'll have to make up some, uh, through fundraising, but they'll, they'll prove it for next year. So that's why I have it in there. For grade four, I have twelve hundred dollars in there for science resources, again. Uh, we don't have anything in grade four for science. Our teacher, our students haven't had any new text, any informational texts that's aligned to the standards that's, that they're supposed to be covering in science. They don't have anything that's newer than the nineteen-eighties. So that's definitely an item. And we had a thirty-five hundred dollar item in there next year. So the thirty-five, or last year, this year, we had thirty-five hundred dollars in there. So if I increase that item by twelve hundred dollars, I think I can build up our classroom- So if I increase that item by twelve hundred dollars, I think I can build up our classrooms with some strong informational text aligned to the standards that our teachers have as a core resource. And then additional tutor hours for advanced students. We're noticing that we're, that we're putting a lot of our financial resources into our struggling students, which is, which is great and that's what we should be doing, but we also have these students that we notice when they get to sixth grade are going into different districts or they're going to different schools. And I'm talking with those parents and I'm saying, you know, why, why are you moving to different schools? Why are you going to other places? And they say, they tell me, you know, we just want to see a little bit more from Winthrop as far as our students that are really advanced and need to be pushed a little bit more. And so this year, we've been taking some of our tutor hours and we've been polling students to do advanced DLA groups, advanced math groups, things like that to, you know, a small number of students and we've seen some, some really positive feedback from parents and really positive feedback from students. So that's, that's where that money is. So that's just a academic breakdown. Forward again. Technology budget additions, a technology integration specialist, we'd really like to see somebody to really push our Chromebook initiative forward, to have someone in our building on a daily basis that can work with our teachers instructionally and help them use the tools. Just because we have the device and it's in our school doesn't mean that, you know, it's being used on a daily basis and that the teachers are really, feel comfortable and skilled with implementing them continuously. allocations to support new devices, that's twenty-five hundred dollar allocation. That's just to make sure each year that we're updating our devices. If we have a couple Chromebooks that get damaged and we need to purchase them and maintain them, that we're keeping that line item in there for that. And then the online conference sign-ups, did a survey to parents, parents seem to really enjoy signing up online for the conferences, so I'd like to continue that next year. Maintenance additions, this is the last item. We put some line items in there for custodial maintenance, five thousand dollar line item. I think that's a steal because if we have our custodians working overtime and they're painting and doing things, we have some highly skilled custodians. If we're paying them overtime versus bringing an outside contractor in to do things like painting and carpentry, we're gonna save, you know, a lot of money on the backend there. And so I put a five thousand dollar line item and just to give our, you know, give our custodians the hours there over the summer to keep our building nice, keep it looking good. Maintenance supplies, that's all carpets and rugs. Some of our runners, you'll notice coming up, the runners are very worn, the main carpet coming into the building needs to be replaced, so that's about an eighteen hundred dollar item. Five thousand dollars for playground safety concerns and landscaping. We just need to take a look at our playground, there's some, there's some items on there that we actually took off because they weren't safe and so we'd like to make sure that we're ensuring if our students are gonna be on the playground, which, you know, all summer long, our playground is packed from, you know, students that don't even go to our school, that are local and their families live local, if they're younger, they come and use our playground, we need to make sure that it's safe. And some of that money in there is also for landscaping. Whenever it rains, you'll notice that we have a lot of puddling and it gets really muddy and gross around the playground area, so I'd like to make sure that we do a little bit of excavation there, plant a little more grass and try to eliminate that. That's, that's it for me.
Ms. Bellisstock from Winthrop High School?
Good evening. This is my second year doing the budget, so the first thing I did was kind of look at the last three years of budgets and see where we were spending our money. And prior to me coming on, we would order general supplies and just order thirty-five staplers and a million packages of pens and last year, we realized that it was almost a waste of money. We weren't actually providing the supplies that the teachers needed, we were providing supplies we thought they needed. So last year, my lead teachers did a great job of assessing what are supplies they really needed and we went through the supplies we had in stock and this year, they've been amazing. They have only ordered supplies that they really needed and that has allowed our supply budget to be reduced because now we have money to allocate towards areas that we felt were needed. We have never not provided teachers with supplies they needed, we just gave them what they really needed. So we were able to reduce our supply budget, which was great. We have been able to reduce our main office budget because we are not doing as much postage. We spent a lot of money sending out information to parents while now between iPass, Connected, you know, updates from myself, a variety of things, parents have a lot more options to get this information without us having to do a lot of mass mailing. Eventually, I'd like to report cuts to go that way as well, so we've been able to cut back on our actual postage budget as well as paper supplies, envelopes and all that. So that was, that was kind of a nice thing to see. Also because of the technology, we're not using as much paper for photocopying and things like that because we're finding other ways to, for students to access information except for, you know, instead of running off a million copies of something. So that, that's been very positive and I've been very appreciative of the teachers on this. To be honest, one of the reasons it started was we have very limited space in here, so we couldn't order a lot of supplies as well. So the limited space has also required us to really think about what do we need in our classrooms. So I have three big areas. One's my eBooks. I'm also, and I'm also looking, and the other two areas is an ELL teacher and a world language teacher. My ELL teacher, we've never had an ELL teacher at the high school currently. I hired an English teacher who is ELL certified and I said, I have three students, can you, can you help me out with running an ELL course? Well, within a month, that's, that changed from three students to seventeen students. We are supposed to be providing two and a half hours of instruction for these students, these students are getting one hour of instruction. Based on the population at the elementary schools, that population at the high school is going to continue to grow. We really desperately need a full-time ELL teacher at the high school to work with these kids. These kids are struggling in all their courses. It's also my high needs area for MCAS and we need to find a way to support these kids and I believe having an ELL teacher full-time will do that. It'll also free up my English teacher who's been amazing this year, taken over this class, be able to actually, you know, teach what she's, what she's certified to teach for. So that's my, that's my, if I had a number one, that would be it on my list. The other one is a world language teacher and it's, and it's, it's been really interesting having the eighth grade all take world languages. It's been a fantastic experience for them. It'll allow them to either take more classes at high school, it'll allow us to hopefully have some AP programs at the high school in languages which we've never had before, which is very cool. It allows eighth graders to explore the different languages. This year, we only had Spanish. Next year, we're looking to offer Latin, Italian and Spanish. So we're gonna give these kids a variety of opportunities for languages, which is, which I'm finding that my students who have taken Latin are also taking Spanish. I'm finding students who have taken Spanish for two years are now taking Italian for two years. So it also gives them a variety of languages they can take within their five-year, five-year life at the high school. I just did a little analysis and forty-one percent of my Italian one students take it for three years. Seventy-six of my Spanish one students take it for three years and thirty-one percent of my Spanish one students take it for four years. So those numbers say that the kids want it. My Spanish four class had thirty-five students in it and I had to cut it off. I had no room for any more students and to have one teacher teach thirty-five students is a lot. I believe my, my numbers would have gone up if I had allowed these students to take a language. I had to tell students they couldn't take a language because I couldn't tax a teacher with more than thirty, thirty-five students in the class. So I had to say no to kids who wanted to take a third and fourth year of a language, which was really, really difficult. So I would like to do is hire another world language teacher. I have a Latin teacher who is gonna be offering Latin two next year. Latin students, first year Latin students are gonna be taking the national Latin test with this year, which is amazing. So I would love to have her teach more Latin, hopefully in eighth grade Latin class and a high, two high school Latin classes. I have two teachers who teach both, can teach both Spanish and Italian, which is very cool, so I can have more Italian offerings. Right now, I only had, this year, I had three Italian classes because I didn't have enough teachers who could speak, who could teach Italian. We're offering an Italian four class for the first time, so that means if forty-one percent of these Italian one students have gone for three years, I'm hoping that most of those students will continue on to a fourth year. So, and the goal, you know, much like with our honors kids, is we need to provide the upper-level courses for those kids as well. So being able to, our current eighth graders will probably, would be our first class to be able to take an AP Spanish class when they're a senior, which is very, very exciting. So it's nice to see that our world language program is growing and much like with everything that happens at the high school, it's what the students want and their interest that drives, derives the courses that are offered. You know, I mean, we have our core courses, but these electives, this technically is an elective. Students only need to take two years of language for college, that's it. They're taking two, three, four years of language. I would love to see them take five years of language in the eighth grade, to be able to take five years of language, so. Whether they take the same language for all five years or they take a variety, it just, it makes the students, it helps them with their English classes, it just makes them well-rounded, they learn about new cultures and they're actually been very excited about these classes. So, so those are my two, my two staffing requests. My third big one is, as I've been promoting for the last year, is my iPad and eBook initiative. I met with the Budget Subcommittee about a month ago, is that when I met? And I did a cost analysis of how this is gonna play out. So based on what my lead teachers told me, we will need about twenty-eight hundred textbooks to be replaced. I also had them price out how much it would cost if we actually bought the textbooks and it would cost two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So there's a difference of two hundred and nine. With the eBooks, you either buy a one-year lease with the company or you can actually, the kids can actually buy, we might actually buy the books the kids keep for a long time, forever. And at the average cost of fifteen dollars, it would cost us forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars a year. So it would take us five years to get to the cost of replacing those hardcover textbooks. And I did some, some research and while math and English textbooks are usually replaced every ten years, science and social studies textbooks should be replaced every, every five years. So for an average of seven years, we're actually providing our students with the most up-to-date information and they get to keep them, they have this information forever. So we're looking at, our current, my current textbook budget is very small, it's an allocation of about a thousand dollars, less for certain departments, of eight thousand dollars. I would love to have a yearly eBook cost of forty-four thousand dollars to going forward so that every year, we can provide students with the most up-to-date textbooks for eBooks. And that would just, that's where my biggest increase besides my staffing is thirty-six thousand dollars, I'm looking to increase my budget. Now, not all these textbooks are gonna be replaced this year, we're looking to roll it out. I'm not, I'm not, some departments, I know my English department is already asking me about eBooks, my social studies department is asking me about eBooks, so they want to get going now. Other departments, maybe my math department or some of the sciences may, it may take a little longer for them to research and figure out what's gonna be the best books for their, for there. But by having it in my budget, I can provide teachers with the opportunity to research and to try out these books and to start, you know, incorporating them into the curriculum. So, I mean, the other things on my, my additions are small, more of it is just cost of living, you know, cost of, you know, PSAT cost has increased, custodial maintenance has increased, graduation has increased a little bit. And I'm also, I have a secretary who's been doing my AP testing and organization this year and last year with very little compensation and she's been doing an amazing job, but with more and more students taking AP, it's really taking a lot of her time and honestly, sometimes she's, she's not really getting paid for it and I'd love to be able to compensate her for the amazing work she's been doing and she's invaluable in that position right now, so. And that's where I am.
Thank you.
Greg, and now with-
I have slides, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's good. And now on the district-wide, you'll see that we've got a couple of increases areas and we'll go into some explanation on that, first with special education in the homeless area as well, you see, that's one of the requests, and then athletics. So I'll start with Jen and then I'll conclude with athletics and then we'll be concluded and then we'll be open for questions. So Ms. O'Connell, who's way down the end there, can you hear her?
So I'm going to start this evening by talking with you about the add district tuition line, Joe. So in the information that's provided in your budget packet, it's written up in a narrative, I've broken it out by section and I'll just go through it that way. So to date, there are known student expenses and tuitions for FY15 that total one million fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. And in the packet that you have, it breaks it down by the number of students that are outplaced, so I won't go through that right now. But the tuition line was funded at eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars for FY15. We were able, with the tuitions that we were able to prepay out of Circuit Breaker and the home services that we were able to pay out of the Omni Grant, I anticipate that we should be on target for this year. So moving on to FY16. Again, with the known students and the costs, the total projected tuitions are one million, one hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. The line is to be funded at eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. Again, we hope to prepay tuitions with monies from Circuit Breaker and really the concern here is just that, you know, in past budgets, money was carried over in Circuit Breaker for unforeseen special education costs. And, you know, an example of that would be if a student were to move into the district that attends the collaborative, we would then have to pay for that tuition, so that's an example of an unforeseen cost. You know, I'm recommending that a cushion is left in the Circuit Breaker amount because special education really is unpredictable and I just am concerned that if we don't leave room for those unforeseen costs that I had mentioned, that we, you know, for the next school year, we're gonna be behind in the projected costs. I did wanna talk to you a little bit about just trends that we're noticing with special education. So one thing is that the number of students on IEPs actually has decreased when you look at a five-year breakdown from two thousand and ten all the way to two thousand and fourteen. So number of students on IEPs went from three hundred and ninety-two down to three hundred and sixty-five. So the state average has pretty consistently been about seventeen percent and currently Winthrop Public Schools is on par with the state average. It can be a little bit misleading when you look at that number because when you think about a decrease in percentage or a decrease in the number of students in IEPs, I think a lot of people then think, oh, that must mean that we have a decrease in cost. But just like, you know, commensurate with the economy, as costs increase, so do costs for special education. So things like our ABA services for students and our vision services, those have increased over time, just like, you know, if you were to think of the example, the price of a gallon of milk has increased over time, so have our costs for special education. The decrease though, I think, really can be attributed to a couple of different factors. The first part, I think, really has to do with the work going on at the building levels that have to do with the initiatives that are, you know, continue to be implemented in regards to the response to intervention, the co-teaching models that have been put in place and inclusion for students. I think over time, this approach to learning has given students a more direct, focused and data-driven approach to learning that really has proven to be beneficial. The second part has to do with the work that's done with the chairperson, chairpeople and myself. You know, we meet regularly to discuss projections of students that, you know, are moving on to IEPs, moving off of IEPs, students that might be going out of district, you know, students that are moving from grade to grade, those types of things, and looking for trends within those numbers. So, you know, when I talk about, you know, looking for trends, we also think about when trends are realized, creating programs around those trends. So an example of that is we were able to create three different classes- So an example of that is we were able to create three different classrooms at the start of this school year to support our students that have social, emotional, and behavioral needs. And it really has been tremendous. We were able to partner with Walker Consultants from the Walker School in Needham. And they've been able to provide us with professional development and also some consultation services for our staff when, in supporting those students. And just to give you a little bit of background, the students that are in these classrooms, the previous school year, were really school avoidant, school phobic, have history of emotional needs, you know, such as anxiety and depression and things of that nature, to the point where they really had stopped attending schools. And with the implementation of these classrooms, they've been able to, you know, experience success. And I think that it highlights, and this was part of the handouts that were given, is the importance of creating in-district programs. So quality, sustainable programming in district to support our students, to help keep them in our schools and in our community. So, you know, it's, it's a cost-efficient way to develop programs for our district. We were actually fortunate to have two students that were able to return from out-of-district and take part in these classrooms. And they are, you know, doing very well. The next section is in regards to transportation. And Mr. Masero talked about it briefly in the beginning. But up to this point, we've only had one line in the budget for transportation. And so the items that were charged were students that were being transported, that were attending out-of-district schools, but also homeless transportation. And it all went under that one line. And what's been happening, and you can see in the graph, we've had an increasing number of students that are identified as homeless and those costs have continued to rise. So the recommendation was, and the line has been created, but we're asking for additional monies at this time. And that's what's being requested here. By having those two separate lines, it allows the district to really, you know, I think, keep better track because homeless transportation is a reimbursable cost, but private transportation is not. So it does two things. I think it creates transparency in the budget. And then by having the accounting of the homeless transportation versus the private transportation, it just is much easier for us to keep track when we're putting in for that reimbursement at the end of the school year. So just a little bit of background and I think about the increase on the homeless data that we're kind of seeing. So we're transporting and more students identified as homeless than we've ever had. The table in your packet, I think, demonstrates the costs of transportation from June 2011, sorry, September 2011 to June 2014. So when you're comparing FY12 to FY14, you can see that the costs went in homeless transportation from $13,390. And then if you look at FY14, $50,669. So a significant increase there. In FY12, we were transporting five homeless students. And currently, we're transporting 14. So, you know, again, it's just a significant increase. And I project, from what we have seen in costs spent, and only up until December, it's $31,252 that we had spent up until that point, that we will spend more. I project that we'll spend more by the end of the school year than what we had spent last year. In, like, one of the, the other handout is just some facts about McKinney-Vento and students that qualify under McKinney-Vento and the homelessness act. I wasn't sure, you know, what everybody's background was with that and how much information, you know, each of you have. So I wanted to just hand that out in briefly. It's any student who lacks a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. So I think a lot of people, when they think about homeless, they, you know, think about living on the street. And that isn't the case. You know, it could be a family that they are just struggling to make ends meet. They, you know, for whatever reason, they are out of their home or their apartment and they're doubled up with another family. It might be a family member or a friend. Under McKinney-Vento, that's considered homeless. You know, there's, there's a number of examples there on the handout. So it could be, you know, living in a motel or a hotel. It could be a shelter. It could be a child who is waiting for foster care and in the custody of DCF. So there's, there's just a number of examples that think traditionally not what any, you know, buddy would expect as, you know, the definition of homeless necessarily. So that information's in there. And as far as the, the requests, the staffing, additional staffing requests, Mrs. Pearson had talked about it in her presentation, about the request of the Gorham Court, thanks for the teacher and the paraprofessional, the ESP, for these sub-separate classrooms. It just really has to do with the, the high needs of those students. But I just wanted to mention that. We also, there was a request for an additional ESP, for two additional ESPs at the high school that weren't reflected in that building-based budget. And the, I did a cost analysis and that is in your budget packet. So it shows the comparison of if those students were to go out of district including transportation. And I was conservative with those figures versus hiring an additional ESP to support those students. So just food for thought there. And then the last thing has to do with the entitlement grants. So in special education, we have some grants. Those are not in the budget request. I think they're on the back of the actual budget. But I just wanted to say that, you know, grants themselves, they're not guaranteed money. We've been fortunate that, I think, over the years, the amount that we've been allocated has remained roughly the same. You know, what concerns me is the potential cuts. This governor has been pretty vocal about the cuts. And so just that, to make you all aware that, you know, the costs associated with the grants, if they were to be cut, would then return to the school-based budget. So in the Omni Grant, otherwise known as the 240 Grant, there are 14 positions, either in whole or in part, that are funded through that grant. The 274 is the Program Improvement Grant. And that's used right now to provide professional development or consultation services to staff. And then the 262 is, again, used to fund an ESP. And then there's another additional grant that's a small amount of money that is used to have some professional development for staff. So that's all. Thank you very much.
And so I'm going to be the closer here for you. And I'm going to talk a little about athletics and then kind of also close up what they've talked about. And the athletics, as I said before, our total budget of athletics that we're projecting next year is actually $486,207. That includes all the athletic expenses that are in the budget, such as athletic director, coaches, transportation, fall maintenance, rink rental dues, insurance, equipment details, all of that stuff. Out of that $486,207, 259 is what we project that we need to raise either through user fees or gate receipts, scholarships or advertisement. Now, every year, the question has always been asked to me, can we reduce the fees? Can we look at those things? And every year, I've said, geez, let's see if we add this amount, we might be able to do something like that. But now I've gotten a real good look at four years of data. And I can tell you that, no, we cannot reduce the fees at the rate we're going. And the reason for that is because, A, our expenses keep growing, but our revenue is decreasing. And the reason our revenue is decreasing is because some of our gate receipts are going down as well as some of our participation in the sports is going down. And that sometimes is because of either various enrollment issues or various things. I mean, those things happen. It's very similar to when the town projects what monies they're going to have basically through how many cars are going to be purchased and the excise tax throughout the year. You know, you make those projections. Well, it's kind of like where we're at when it comes to athletics. We have to project how many students are going to participate. So in looking at that, we've realized that we have to make sure that we, every year, we always get really close and we say, geez, you know, we're going to make up the rest, whether it's 10,000 or 20,000. And three years ago, I came to the committee and said, we've got to move 112,000 right into the budget, which we did. Well, it's enabled us to keep the user fees at what they're at. And I'm not here tonight recommending that the user fees be increased at all. What I'm recommending tonight is, and unfortunately, I'm not recommending that we take away the user fees either because we just can't afford to do that. What I'm recommending out of here is that we add another $50,000 that I have in the budget to the athletics in order to keep the user fees at what they are. Otherwise, we would have to take a look at possibly raising those fees because in our, as we've looked at those projections, we do see that we're not, as, as the years have gone on, our coaches' salaries have increased, our officials, game officials have increased, police details have increased. All of these keep increasing by 2%, but not the other stuff. So that's something that I wanted you to, to be aware of as we talk about this. And, and knowing that I feel now I've got a much better understanding of how this works. So with that said, tonight, you were able to kind of hear, I know it was a little long-winded from all of us, but it's, you know, budgets are budgets and it's detailed. But what we really wanted to show you all this year is how we came to these decisions. I want to compliment my principals for really working and my special ed director for working within, you know, their departments, working with their site councils and really seeing what their needs are. But not only did they tell you what their needs are tonight, but they backed it up with the data and they also showed it as an initiative, a strong initiative that is going to drive our students to excellence. And, and that's the key here. So the budget proposal is $17,978 at this time. This is the one that we will advertise starting tomorrow. This is the one that will have a public hearing on it on March 9. And after March 9, any of those changes that you'd like to recommend or move around or things like that, it's entirely up to you. At this time, I'd be more than happy to ask the chairman for questions. And any one of us can answer those questions, can direct them however you wish. And we hope that we've been able to give you what I would consider a brief preliminary view of what we're looking for for next year.
The chairman does have a few questions.
Great.
Maybe I'll go backwards. Ms. O'Connell.
Yes.
I'm a little, I don't understand private versus homeless transportation. I wonder if you could explain that to me, please.
Okay. So when I refer to private transportation, I'm talking about students that are being transported to the schools, private schools and the collaboratives versus students that are identified as homeless.
And what would be an example of a private school and the collaborative?
So one of the, you know, one of our students on an IEP that is an out-of-district placement, not attending the collaborative. So it could be, you know, Dearborn Academy or, you know, one of the other private schools.
Okay. If a student is attending the Winthrop Public Schools and that student's family becomes homeless and they go to live with their aunt in East Boston, the Winthrop School District is still responsible for educating that student. Is that correct?
Correct.
If the opposite happens, a student lives in East Boston and goes to the Boston Public Schools, the family becomes homeless and comes to live with an aunt in Winthrop, what happens there?
So-
Is Boston responsible or is Winthrop responsible?
Under McKinney-Vento, that student can attend the Boston Public Schools or they can enroll in the Winthrop Public Schools.
But, but the question is, is where's the, so if they enroll in-
Where's the funding come from?
If they roll in-
Well, the funding would come from Boston unless they're on an IEP. Okay, so it's a little complicated. If their student's on an IEP chooses to attend the Boston Public Schools and the transportation is not included on the IEP under that section, then it would be a cost share. It would be a 50-50 split. We would have to pay half and Boston would have to pay half.
For the transportation?
Yes.
But not the education?
Right. If they're choosing to attend Boston Public Schools, to stay in their home district.
So when the East Bos, when the Winthrop student goes to live with the aunt in East Boston, they would have the option of attending school in East Boston?
Yes.
Is that correct?
They, they do. And so the Department of Education, in the best interest of the student, really advocates that districts allow students to attend and be educated in that home district. And that's, you know, what's protected under McKinney-Vento.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bellisstock. You mentioned in your written material that you would like an additional world language teacher.
Yes.
And in your verbal presentation, you talk about Latin, Italian, and Spanish.
Yes.
Is that one additional world language teacher going to teach three languages?
Well, what I would do is I would shift. I have a Latin teacher who's teaching Spanish. I have, how, how it works right now is I have, I have two full-time Spanish teachers. I have two teachers who can teach Italian and Spanish. And I have a teacher who can teach Spanish and Latin. So I would be shift, it would just be a shift of, of teachers. So I can add more Latin teachers to my Latin program, more to my Italian program. So I would be looking for Spanish teachers, really what I'd be looking for because I have enough, that's what you're asking.
That was my next question.
Thank you. Because I have, I have enough, which has been fantastic, that I have teachers who can teach Italian, Spanish, and Latin. So I have enough flexibility with what I have. But Spanish is really where, where's my largest, largest group of students and that's my highest need.
And that would allow you to realign what everybody else does.
Yes, absolutely. It's pretty cool. Yes, absolutely.
And, and I agree with you completely, how sad that we have to deny our students learning a language, learning a foreign language because we don't have the staff to teach them when they want to learn it.
Right. And that's why my, Mr. Nickerson, who teaches my Spanish IV class, he has 35 in that class and he took them on because he didn't want to say no to anybody and I still had to say no. I just, they were just climbing on ceilings at this point. I had no room for them in their physically room. But he would have taught as many as wanted to take the class and I had to say no. And that's not good. I think it's great they want to take Spanish IV. I think it's awesome.
Mr. Harity.
Yes, sir.
Tell me if I'm correct or not correct. With our fourth and fifth grade students, and yes, I am focusing on foreign languages here, they take Spanish with Mrs. Scamannas once per six-day cycle. Is that correct? And does that go through the full academic year?
It does, yes.
Do our sixth and seventh grade students, they are now taking Spanish? Because Spanish is the only language other than English taught in the coming school. Is that correct?
Right, yes.
So our sixth and seventh grade students take Spanish with Mrs. Scamannas three out of the six days, six-day cycle. three out of the six days, six-day cycle. Does that go for the full academic year?
It does not. No, it goes for two trimesters of the three.
Is it physically possible, time-wise possible, to teach our sixth and seventh grade students the full academic year? Or even more, every day have a Spanish class? Can that possibly fit into our schedule at the coming school?
We could do it similar to the way we do fourth and fifth grade, where they would have it one day per cycle and do it the entire year. The problem is that we have six specialists. And so, which is, I mean, it's not a problem. It's, you know, really the middle school model and the difference between the junior high and the middle school, and the difference between middle school and high school is all about exploration and students really being exposed to a variety of topics, a variety of subject areas, things like that. So we offer six different specials to our students. If we had them take Spanish as one of those specials, then we would have to limit the other options that they could take for the rest of the day and for the rest of the year. So they wouldn't be able to take, you know, music, art, drama. PE, they have to take, but, you know, we'd have to cut library, you know, our library technology typing special, you know. There would have to be some sacrifice in a different area to be able to roll that out. And, you know, it really... To me, we really have to take a hard look at that philosophically, about what's best for kids at that age level, and what we want to expose them to, and, you know, what's best for them developmentally, so.
Help them to explore as many things as possible so that later in life they'll know about them.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Pearson?
Hi, Mr. Scamro.
Hi.
You're so eager to opportunity.
I tried to... In the past, I know you have not wanted to take Spanish into your school. And you've had very good reasons for that. And I see in this budget, again, there is not a request for a Spanish teacher in your budget. I would only ask that, at some point in the future, you consider it. I do have a question. I thought I saw in your budget, Ms. Pearson, a request for a full-time technology person, but I didn't hear you speak about that. Are you requesting a full-time technology person or are you not?
I am requesting a full-time technology person. What I tried to do, Mr. Scamro, was to just speak to the points that were in front of you on the PowerPoint presentation, because I just didn't want it to be confusing. But in the hard copy that you have, yeah, there is a request there. The reason... Is that the follow-up question, to kind of validate why it's in the budget?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yes.
I've been trained to only answer the question and not take it another step, so... For the attorneys in the room, I apologize for that faux pas. So the reason for that request is this. We have... Our situation is very different. So we have consumables for our students to learn from. Our students don't have textbooks. With the increase in the hardware that we now have with the addition of third grade, with the increase in the software, because third grade now also has different supplemental learning programs, with the increase in what I'm asking for in terms of what Mrs. Sullivan is going to have available to her to supplement her instruction when students are taking technology, the fact that we have increased staff, that we have now relatively sophisticated security cameras, phone systems, copiers. Teachers no longer have printers of their own, and they have to send their information to the copier to print. When we have technology that goes askew, it virtually puts learning to a halt. And we've had that happen. Only last month, we had a copy machine that was broken on one floor, a floor that impacted second and third grade classroom instruction on a daily basis. So I think that person would be well-served. My best guess is that we would make additional use of that person outside of just their ability to troubleshoot technology. But the way I look at it is, we have an increase of all of these things, the hardware, the software, the supplies, the staff, yet we're remaining stagnant in terms of our ability to address the needs that are associated with those increases. And so that's the reason that it's in there. The email that you had sent me, which had mentioned something about us potentially being able to share, the way I look at it is, a little love is better than no love. So if you want that to be a talking point going forward, I'd like to continue to talk about that.
Okay.
So if the choice is eliminate or a point five, I want to weigh in on that.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thanks.
I want to ask the question, that's all.
No, I'm glad you do, because, I mean, it's an important allocation, and it's a five-figure allocation.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Ms. Sullivan?
Just to follow up with the last point you were talking about, Mr. Scamro. I think the technology person that you're talking about, Mrs. Pearson, is a little bit different than what Mr. Harity was talking about. The technology person in your budget is integrative technology for the teachers. Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Do you want to explain just more, a little bit about the job description that would be?
Yeah, sure. So, I mean, my vision is to really put a lot more emphasis on technology in our building, which we've done this year. I mean, coming in the year, we had our lab computers, and we had maybe four computers in some of the classrooms. Now we have, you know, over 200 computers throughout the school. We have two carts on each floor. Students and teachers are signing out computers, using them all over the school. Classes are, you know, truly differentiated with this technology and using it a lot. But when a student comes in, say, new students come in and they need a new Google account, or the Chromebooks go down, or if a button pops off, or, you know, that sort of thing. We need someone to be able to fix that. We also need someone that can go into the classroom and say, you know, here's some new resources, here's some new ideas, here's a way that you can really engage students and share that with the teachers and use it as a professional development-type role as well. And, you know, that's my vision of it, long-term. Someone that really can own the technology piece in the building and keep us pushing forward. Because, you know, right now, our technology guys are awesome, and they're doing a really good job, but they're really spread thin. And we had, you know, we added all these new iPads at the high school, and we added our Chromebooks, and, you know, the town has a lot of needs as well. And so, you know, really having someone that would be really focused and, you know, under the umbrella of student-centered, period. Student-centered. And, you know, I think that would really help push us forward.
And then, if I can continue. Ms. Bellisstock, in the budget subcommittee meeting we had about a month ago, you had mentioned a similar integrative specialist.
Right.
And then I don't know if I saw that in the presentation tonight.
It's not, because we're looking to maybe redefine some roles. So I'm not looking for an additional staffing. We're just looking to take the staff we currently have and just maybe change the roles a little bit, that's all. I mean, we have a lot of resources here that we can utilize that.
Right. But you're still in need of someone to play the role of an integrative specialist for the teachers to know what...
Absolutely.
How they can optimize use of the iPads.
Absolutely, but I'm not looking for an additional staffing right now.
All right, if I can, if I may, comment on that. We believe we can make that happen in the current budget.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that on, Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah, can you let Brian have a chance?
No, no, okay, I thought you were done.
I'm going to just read my notes and then we can get back to it.
Okay, Mr. Perrin?
I just had a question on the eBooks. I think that's great.
You can go, as long as you vote with me on the February vacation.
I'm going to vote with you, but I'm not going to vote what you're going to vote.
Say, vote with him or go with him?
Go ahead, Mr. Perrin, please.
I just had a quick question on the eBooks. You said you were going to phase them in. So we're not replacing all the textbooks for the high school with this at this point, but that's the ultimate goal, is that?
Yes, yes.
So what would you say the percentage would be for classes that are going to have these eBooks? I mean, it's just a large amount of money.
I know, off the top of my head?
I won't hold you to it, I just...
No, I'd like to... I'm being very optimistic, like 50%, but that's optimistic. But I know I have departments... It'd be... Right now, I'm seeing departments. I'm seeing my English department, my social studies department as being my two big drivers, my world language department. So I'm thinking maybe 50% would be looking to move. They're already... Those departments are already looking to move now. So my science and my math and... What else do I have? Those are probably my two departments that are struggling with finding the appropriate online books for what we're using. But absolutely, I know my English department could probably, and as well as my social studies department, could get up and go. So I would say 50%.
That's great. Just to be able to use those iPads a lot more, you know, and to be a little more interactive in classes, great.
They're just... The teachers are already using as much as they possibly can, and we just need to be able to find them with funding to be able to go further with it. So, yeah, I'm very excited about what's going on already.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Pearson, the math tutor you had put in a line for $30,000, and you had mentioned that would just be for 10 hours per week? Did I misunderstand?
No, that's... Well, that's currently what we're at, is about 10 hours a week. This would take us up to about 15 hours a week. So those are two retired teachers. I'm sure you recognize the names, and so they're super familiar with our math program. That's our preference, to go in that direction. It's not... You can't just pull a brand-new teacher out and expect them to be able to do something like that, because the Go Math program, as you know, and I think the town knows at this point as well, is a very, very specific program in that it has very specific vocabulary and very specific instructional approaches that have to be used just as part of that Go Math program. So they are paid at that hourly teacher amount. And so that would get us about 15 hours a week for each of those two folks that are mentioned in there.
Okay. And that math tutoring instruction happens during the school day?
It does, yep. And the students are selected by the classroom teacher based on need. And as I say, based on need, either because we want to be able to move them along a little bit faster because they need that kind of a challenge or because they need some supplemental help. And so it's small group instruction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Yes, sir.
I'm very impressed by your goals and your plans for next year, all four of you. I hope we can come up with the money to support them. What I'm trying to read here, and maybe it's Mr. Siro's call, is this, last year, we had a wish list. We had three different, two or three different levels of... And is this a wish list or is it a bottom-line list?
This, to be honest on this, one of the things I did not want to do was create something that I knew right off the bat was going to be, you know, we're only going to cut a million dollars and things like that. This is a... This, for the most part, is a must list, okay? Not a wish list. These are things that we would request. I got probably over $18 million worth of requests. I reduced it down by about $400,000 or $500,000 already, because one of the other line items that's in this budget, that there are monies that are also allocated in this, is a projection of negotiations that we have to take a look at. Not a percentage, not a, you know, anything like that, but just because we don't know what that is. But I have to take... I have to bring that into consideration, and that's also in this budget. So with that, I felt a responsibility to know that if I could keep it under a certain figure, I felt, okay, this would be a good way to move forward. And then, of course, some items, sometimes we're able to bring those items on depending upon retirements and various things that do happen also at a later time. But in this particular request, this really isn't a wish list. This is a, you know, this is what they feel is an initiative that's going to continue the excellence that they're working on down at the levels that they're at.
Because I think in the beginning, you said that these, that this budget did not represent all of their requests, but it was something that you were very comfortable with.
Correct, correct. And one of the things is that, we'll go back to the technology position that Mr. Scamro had talked about with Ms. Pearson. And I could certainly put that back in, but that was more of a person that was going to be handling... It was, we were looking at originally maybe putting a Mr. Sacco that you saw here that's worked, who was here tonight running the computers and over there, at each building to be a building base. But in looking at that and then versing that against other types of positions that I felt were a necessity, I made some decisions. You know, those were my decisions at that point to say, this is the way we could, we'll go forward on it. And in another instance, I had asked Mr. Harity, math coach, integrated specialist, what if you had to choose one? What would be your priority? He said at the time, you know, he was looking at, you know, it was hard for him to decide. Then I said, could this position possibly do both? Could we look at that? And he said, yes, we could take a look at that. So that's why I funded it in that particular way. So Mr. Gibson takes this, I thought.
To that technology position, we have an IT department that serves the whole town, all departments. Is that... Should that technology position be part of that?
Yes, that's where that person would be. The difference was, we were trying to...
Focus.
See, right now, we have, currently in the tech department for the town, we have four people.
Right.
And I, on the school department, pretty much fund three of those positions out of that. And so I was looking at, you know, the school, yet the town is utilizing all of those folks. But I was looking at trying to maybe pick up two more to maybe put into the building so that we had somebody within the building taking care of those day-to-day issues such as Ms. Pearson had stated that she does have and that the schools do have. But I thought, well, maybe I could put a hold on that right now, or I could look at it from a different funding perspective by maybe talking to the town on that, so.
Okay. Prepaid tuitions in special ed, I don't know if that's a question for Mrs. O'Connell or for you?
Well, we can... Susan is pretty good on that one as well. Last year, you know, we increased it up to seven. Each year, we keep trying to increase it. And one of our goals, as we've always said, is that we want to have enough in the kitty that in case an unexpected tuition occurred, we want to make sure that that's taken care of. Because we don't ever want to get into the mess that we got into the first year that I was here. So, and I think that between Susan and Jennifer, they've done a very good job of putting together the prepayments. That's another reason why you look at our out-of-district tuition. Now, last year, our out-of-district projection was much higher than it was this year. And this year, we feel comfortable in projecting that we would be around the same area, same. But we've increased the circuit breaker a little more because we know that we would prepay, try to prepay, an additional one moving forward on it. And a lot of credit goes to the fact that Ms. O'Connell last year was very adamant, and really on me, I have to tell you, because there were some times during the summer where it was like, I don't know if I can afford to put this position in there, and really adamant about saying, this is going to save us money. You have to trust me on this thing. And to the point where I said, okay. And she's proven that over and above. And now, next year moving forward, I feel comfortable saying, we can keep that as it is. But now, where else can we put more monies into the special ed area that are going to keep our students with us?
Which, the reason I asked on the prepaid, was that something that the finance commissioner was doing in there? And I just want to make sure that we follow through with that so that when we meet with them, we can say, yes, in fact, we've done it. And on the, to Ms. O'Connell, on this, keeping the kids here in, I think is not only a cost-saving, I think it's a tremendous social thing. When we look at the presentation we had here a couple of weeks ago, and Jimmy Fabiana was here with Frankie, and talked about what being school, going to school in Winthrop, what a difference it made for the Fabiana family. I think the cost-effective thing is nice, but I think the social piece of it and the homes, we're home, not we're not busing, I think is very important. I think that everything that you people have said tonight shows that Winthrop is on the rise in our educational system. We have some people who are moving into town who believe in Winthrop. We built a new high school, we're building a new building, that it passed 65 to 35%, which was phenomenal. Nobody felt comfortable that that was going to happen. I think the support for the schools is there. Sitting with two hats on, I'm a liaison to the school committee. And the things that we heard last night at the council meeting, given the position we're in with the most recent blizzard is, we need this, 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 and this. So we need a lot, and we need to look at where the funds are coming from. And we need more money for the school, I absolutely agree. But we need to price... But we need to prioritize. Do we, do we sacrifice a policeman, or do we sacrifice a teacher, or do we sacrifice a firefighter, or do we sacrifice and not be able to get to school because there's too much snow on the ground? So my responsibility is to look at the whole picture. And I, and I said this a thousand times and I will continue to say it until I am no longer council president, is that we are no longer the town and the schools. We are the town of Winthrop with several departments, one of which is the school department. We need to look at this as a cooperative effort. And I would hope tomorrow night, when the school committee, when the finance commission is looking at the school committee budget, that the school committee sub, uh, finance, excuse me, budget subcommittee will be there. I know Mr. Masiro is gonna be there. But I think what we need to look at is, let's do this from day one. Let's work this budget together from day one and let's be in competitive positions. We, every department needs more money, there's no doubt about it. There's only so much money that can go and we, we need, we all need it. So there's a couple of ways we can do it. We can cut services in some departments to, to supplement other departments, or we can pass Prop Two and a Half override. That's not, that's not a popular thing unless we say that, this is what we're gonna do with it. Our schools are gonna be better if we pass a top Prop Two and a Half override. What we need to do is, if in fact it is the priority of the citizens to have a new ten-wheel dump truck and we have a menu-driven Prop Two and a Half like we had before, and to fund the schools, then we can prove to the pe, the people can prove to us that that's what they want. So enough of my speech, but I just wanted to make it clear that my responsibility is to the community. And we have several departments, one of which is the school department. Thank you.
Mr. Gill, if we win the Power Ball though tonight, that would help too.
The best, the best way to win the Power Ball is just don't play it.
Ms. Sullivan?
I, I will say that Washington Town Council meeting last night, my heart did sink when I heard that we were, had running a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar deficit in the snow removal budget this year.
It went up today and it's gonna go up this weekend.
And I, and I thought to myself, boy, that doesn't look good for our school budget. But I do think that education has been a priority for this town and they have shown that in their votes last year. Mr. Masero, do you have numbers and expected student population growth next year? Do we expect another twenty students, fifty students?
We, we, I mean, our, our population actually, on the October first numbers, which is the number that we wanted to be at, was probably an increase. But since October first, we've actually had a decrease in our numbers, probably by, by about twenty students. Now, that shouldn't affect us because it was, we're looking at October first on the number. But, you know, we, we're, we're hopeful on where that is. We, we've been pretty, we've, we've, we've leveled pretty much where we're at. The difference is whether or not our free and reduced numbers have increased.
And do you know if, uh, oh, you know, speaking of trends, I liked, Miss O'Connell mentioning trends in the last couple of years, the trends towards increase in number of special ed or English language learners?
Well, I, I would say our English language learners are increasing much more rapidly than our special ed students. As you heard, Miss O'Connell say earlier, that that, that those that, you know, we've seen a decline in that, which is a good thing because some of the programs that we've been putting together have actually been working now. We, we can prove and show that those programs, where this past year we were able to fund at the elementary levels additional ELL staff. And I would say, you know, Mr. Herity and Miss Pearson, can you chime in on it? But I think that's been benefits, you know, it's been huge benefits that have, because the numbers there, what, what's your number at the, at the William P. Gorman School, how many students in the ELL population?
We're at about sixty-five, but it isn't only the student numbers that we need to be concerned about. We need to be concerned about compliance. So when we spoke last year, you know, we were really, really focusing on a compliance issue, which is what Mrs. Bellisstock is now speaking about.
Right. And Mr. Herity, your numbers are at?
They're at about the same, right about sixty, but we have, there, I think thirty that are coming up from third grade, right?
Right, so we're, you know, each year that's going to continue to grow and that's just what it's gonna be.
I just think it's good to have the data when we're presenting budget numbers, you know what that is. I noticed that the, uh, proposed fiscal two, twenty-sixteen is a three million, sixty-nine thousand, seventy dollars lower than the actual fiscal twenty-fifteen. So the, the proposed that you have seventeen thousand, nine ninety-seven is three million plus a little bit more, lower than the actual of fiscal?
Well, the, the, well, that's because, you have to understand, that's the operating budget that we're proposing because the town, the, the remaining two-point-oh-three million covers all of the other expenses such as the insurances, personnel cost and things like that, that the town puts in with, you know, that they cover. And so when we're, when we're requesting our budget, we're requesting basically what that operating expense would be considered, so. I don't know if that helps you on that, but that's what we're looking at.
Okay. I just have two more things. I think President Gill, when you were talking about the need for technology support and we have a department in the town, if, if you read the building reports, week after week, there's always something in there about, you know, the security or the internet's not working or the telephones aren't working. So it, certainly the department we have for technology, it currently isn't adequate for, for what was going on now for the, the principal's report. So we do need additional support, whether it's, uh, across the schools or...
As a, as a comment on that, I didn't necessarily mean that we had enough staff as we hear. My, my direction was, would, would the technology be separate from the technology department that we now have? It seems to make sense that that would be coordinated.
And, and I'd like to coordinate in that, but what I also wanna make sure is that, I have to be careful that the school's not funding the whole technology department for the whole town in that particular asset as well too, because I think that we do need to look at that. That's an area, and I've had good conversation with the town manager on that, that we need to really take a look at that because if this town's gonna grow technology-wise, then both sides have got to put some money and create that budget on its own. And it shouldn't just be primarily from the school area. We made a conscious decision last year to add a person out of the school budget, which, you know, we did. And now, moving forward, if I keep going in that direction, which I may be forced to, I, I still wanna see some input on that consolidation and that partnership with the town as well to say, hey, this is an area we need some support on as well.
And my last thing is, as Mr. Scarmore's passion seems to be world language, I still would love to see more physical education in elementary schools. I think that, you know, children, you know, ages four through seven are learning through play and movement and it helps them sequence and be organized and helps them sit in the classroom and learn if they're able to move for different parts of the day. So if we're able to provide daily physical education in the eighth grade, I think it's as important, if not more, for the, the pre-K through second or third grade. So I'd really like to see that in the budget as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Can I just have one more?
Of course, sir.
If I'm gonna add, is that at the, more of that, but lower level? I sure would like to see industrial arts at the middle school and/or the high school.
I agree.
I know Mr. Perrin has, has a passion for that, when, when he watched his kids not know which end of the screwdriver to use. I do have some bit of a lean toward industrial arts, I spent twenty years teaching it, so, and, and I firmly believe in it. And I think there's a void and I won't get into the specifics of where I think the void is, but I think it could cost us less to educate our students if we had, oh, the top line, if we had more industrial arts at the secondary level.
Well, I think with the new high school, we're gonna have a lot more space to be able to offer those programs, absolutely.
You're gonna have an opening for a former council president, maybe?
How cheap are you?
I, I, I agree though, it's, we, we've lost a whole generation
We have.
that came through, although I made the best table out of anybody, I'll tell you right now, it's unique. But that class, those classes taught people basic life skills, you know what I mean? That you, you use your whole life, you know, how to use power tools, how to fix something and, and how to build something. And I think that's, you know, when, when you start talking to some of these kids, seventeen and eighteen years old, that, you know, they're buying cars, they're trying to work, they, they don't know one end of a screwdriver from another or a hammer or a screw or a nail. It's, it's, it's absolutely amazing, really, you just don't see it, you know? I know the vocational school office, those things, but it'd be so great to, even if we had a club, you know, come on and volunteer for this.
Don't volunteer.
But you know, it's just a great idea.
Well, our education subcommittee for the new building is gonna start looking at the child development program and this would be another program that we would love to look at. You know, much like both programs, it's funding is, is definitely gonna have to come from, from the school committee on that. But if you want, guys wanna volunteer to teach, come on in, come on in, I think all to do it, so.
We will certainly have the space at the, um, the new facility because that, we, when we promoted the Viking Longship space, that's also the scenic shop. That's also all of those areas, so it's a perfect area. And it's only being utilized currently one block a day, so there's plenty of blocks for it to be utilized.
And now has a history classes going on.
Don't declare that equipment surplus yet.
Right. I will say one last thing, just if I may, because I wanted to, I didn't say it earlier tonight, was that the only group that hasn't fallen behind because of the snow, believe it or not, is the school building project. They've been out there in a snowstorm, working every single day, so.
I was by there yesterday and the steel was going and the trains were going, it's, so.
I just wanna say thank you to the principals and Miss O'Connell for your hard work and thoughtfulness. I know this is not done on the night, so I appreciate that, thank you.
I've, um, we haven't voted yet. I've read through the budget, I've listened to you and I asked the questions that I needed to. And I know what President Gill says is the truth, that there's only so many pieces in the pie. And I, however, don't see anything squishy in this budget. As I said earlier, when Miss Bellisstock has to tell Mr. Nickerson, no more, that's a sad day. When Miss O'Connell needs to transport students so they can learn, she needs to do that. The math initiatives that Mr. Herity and Miss Pearson and the technology that you need to run your schools, there are consequences if we don't have these things, serious consequences in my opinion, if we don't have these things. And so saying that, it, it is my intention to vote in favor of this budget as it's been presented tonight. I hope, I pray that the town manager will agree with me, with us, if we approve it. I hope the town council gets a budget that is the number that we are proposing and I hope that they fund us. I know they have a very difficult job, very difficult. But our job is to do the best we can for our schools, for our students. And so I would like to make a motion that we approve the proposed budget of seventeen million, nine-hundred-ninety-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars as given to us this evening.
Second.
Second by Mr. Perrin. Are there any further questions or discussions on the budget?
Aren't we supposed to approve the budget after we have a public hearing?
I would think that we have to have that public hearing.
We have to.
Yes.
But is the, is the motion to present, to push this budget, put this budget forward, not, not to approve the budget, but to put it forward?
So put it forward, we'll post it, as we're going to post it tomorrow.
This is the budget that I would like to do.
If it's, if it's, if you're making a motion for us to post this for the public hearing, then I think that would be that.
Do we need a motion to do that?
You don't need that, but if you wanna show support for it, you could have a, but, you know, you could turn that, but.
Is there anyone who thinks we should change this budget, I guess, would be my question? Mr. Gill, I know that you're in a difficult position, being on both the town council and the school committee.
I will abstain from, from, from the vote of the budget after the public hearing. I will abstain from that vote because of my dual position.
If I may.
And, and I would, I would suggest, I, I agree a hundred percent, we need every single dollar in this budget. But I would request that the budget subcommittee come up with substance with some suggestions that if we're gonna have a two percent increase in the income to the community and this budget represents a six percent increase, where do we come up with the other four percent? It would be absolutely fantastic to have every single one of these programs. If we could provide the safe community for our children to live in that are gonna go to this school. And if we can provide the police protection that makes the neighborhood safe enough that the kids can be transported to the building and if we can keep the snow clear, and if we can do all of the other things, if we can still have a senior center, just tell us what, tell the council or be prepared to tell the council or the finance commission, if you need a six percent increase, where does it come from? It either has to come from reduction in services or increase in income. I don't wanna see any services reduced, I think every single department in this community is stretched. Make some suggestions, whether it's an increase in income or with the school, the school department being a department of the community. Please bear that in mind, I firmly believe that that's what this department is. And I believe that that's why the town council president and the town charter says that the president serves us as a liaison to this community. We need to determine, we need to establish our priorities. These, this program that's presented tonight is probably minimal. It's very important, you're right, it's absolutely necessary, but help us determine our priorities, that's all.
I guess if we don't need to vote, then probably we'll just pass this forward. I withdraw my motion and ask that we...
We'll post this tomorrow for the public hearing and we, we follow along in the twenty-one days.
Mr. Perrin withdraws a second, I withdraw my motion. Thank you, thank you. Next item is public comment. The next item is public relations. Ms. Sullivan?
I don't know if this goes onto public relations, but I, um, driving to the Gorman Port Bank School this morning, was very aware that the sidewalk along Revere Street that's on the, um, housing and Rivers Park and DPW side, the sidewalk was just not walkable and I imagined, you know, I dropped off for breakfast, so I was there at seven fifteen and out of there, so I didn't see the traffic, but I, I don't know what could happen. I know that's not school property, but, um, what could happen to make sure that's clear for tomorrow or?
I know it's public comment, I just...
Yeah.
The, um, the equipment that the housing uses, their John Deere equipment and all of that equipment have broken down. I had inquired on it multiple times because it is a, it was an area of concern. I know that they were working desperately today to try to handle that. I also received multiple calls on various other areas that, um, I was able to touch base with the inspectional service director who went out to some of these places to make sure that those sidewalks were taken care of because a lot of what the town's been working on has been done, with the exception of those particular areas. Today, we did clean up the area out here by the Cumming School that wasn't, you know, done at the, at the given time. So there are those isolated areas and we're working hard to make sure that those isolated areas are completed.
If I can just comment on that, the, the DPW and the public safety people are working on priorities.
Right.
The priorities, their phones are ringing off the hook and...
It's an all-hands on deck, I mean, literally, every minute of the day, they, they're going.
They're doing thirty-hour shifts and, and...
One of the things that really helped with the last storm and I, I'd like to give, since it's public comment, give shout-out to is we had a group of parents who came down.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, yeah.
I'm sorry, if you want.
No, no, that, that there were parents that went out and shoveled bus stops.
Right, and yesterday we act, I did, I asked Mrs. Bellisstock to do a phone call for high school students who wanted to come and help shovel out that particular area for our elderly up in the housing area. And they did get some people that were able to shovel out the back to us, but the priority again was the people's doors and stuff. So it's, it's one of those where we were about to get to those and then we got another snowstorm. And I think we're about to get to the rest of the stuff again and we're gonna get blasted again with another snowstorm, so.
Yeah, it's, it's been a remarkable year for sure. But also thank you to the custodians that have worked extra hard too to clear as much as they've been able to clear. And I know that they were out on the snow days clearing snow, hopefully to open for the next day. So thank you to the custodians and the extra work they've been doing as well. It's just remarkable year.
It is, I'm impressed. Post your adjourned?
Not yet.
Okay.
Do you have anything, sir? Do you have anything, sir?
I've got nothing.
On the DPW, I know if you wanna find Mr. Callow, you're gonna have to find a front-end loader or a back, or a plow to find him because he's out there.
You can't forget Mr. Callow, I mean, you know, he's done an incredible job, and I have to tell you, police department has been there, and the two chiefs, you know, this, this town, you know, you got your chiefs, you got your DPW director, we've had meetings every Sunday morning for the last three weeks because of these storms, with the town manager and all that, I mean, those guys have worked round the clock, and we would not be in, we would not be in school if it wasn't for what those folks have been doing. We'd be like other communities who were out the whole week.
As Mr. Scormeau mentioned, Steve Callow is either in a plow or a front-end loader, and you can't find the chiefs in their office, they're in, they're in patrol hours, I mean, if you have a scanner, you hear the, the scanners going back and forth, I don't know when the chiefs are, the DPW is sleeping.
I don't think they're sleeping at all, I think even the fire department going out and shoveling all those hydrants throughout the town, I mean, it's amazing, you know?
Okay.
Ms. Sullivan?
Just one other thing, I know Mr. Safuni was up on roofs, checking out safety of roofs and the, the newer schools with the flat roofs, if that was gonna be okay with the extra amount of snow, so thank you to him as well for, you know, kinda going above and beyond and climbing up there and checking out for safety, and hopefully we'll be safe for the rest of the winter.
Now, not, not yet, please, not yet. The other group that has been working very hard, while town hall has been closed, I was up there one of our no-school days, and town hall was closed, I had to use my key to get in, but the three people to my right were there, Ms. Hames, Mr. Messero, Ms. Echols, they were there, they were working, they certainly had a big project that they were working on, but they were there, and, and I appreciate that, that very much from them. It would've been very easy to stay home, the rest of the world was staying home, the rest of the Commonwealth was staying home, but you were all working, and I really appreciate that very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Now.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by President Gill. Is there any discussion on this? Any questions? We'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous, we're adjourned.